And you are live, sir.
Thank you, James. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome you all to the interrattle school project building committee meeting. It is our regular meeting Thursday, May 5th. Actually, happy Cinco de Mayo. It is 5:15. Jeff, could you do the roll call, please? You're muted, Jeff. There you go.
I have a feeling he's having another technical issue with his.
All right, I'll do the roll call.
All right.
Amy, Amy Parati.
Here.
Michael Camillo.
Here.
Carol Dugan.
Here.
Yeah, I can't hear a darn thing. Okay.
Steve Woods is here. So there's four of us, correct? I think I have everybody as attendance for members. James, are you going to try to get Jeff?
I am going to do that right in a moment. Once I transition you to your next slide.
Okay. I'm going to hold up for a minute because Jeff does a recording in case there is somebody from the public, although let's say.
We do have one on board with us. I will be back in just a moment, sir.
Okay. Everybody enjoying this beautiful day? Why we can't get more of them? This is the strangest spring that we've had in a long time.
Are all our educators enjoying Teacher Appreciation Week?
Yeah, I think so.
I believe so. They're having food trucks and everything else. They're getting treated well.
Excellent. I enjoyed the weather today. I ate my appreciation lunch outside at my school. It was lovely.
Very nice. Yep, I think I think they're being treated well, and they're certainly not leaving work hungry.
Where are you, Beth, now? You crack? Are you at the crack schools?
Yeah, I'm a crack Montessori magnet in Hartford.
And you left, you were in New Britain prior to that, right?
Yes, sir. Fifteen years. Hard hit.
Correct. Treating you better?
It's different.
Different?
Different.
Semi-private, public?
Yeah, it's it's a lot of navigating, very different.
It's a hybrid, right?
Yep. Our students aren't really our students. We have to get permission for everything from district. So it's kind of interesting. It's a little different model.
And they're done now, growing, correct? There's no more crack schools on the horizon, I believe, right?
Right.
Anna Grace was the last one, I think.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
They still move people around and shift and combine and do crazy things, but nothing new.
I finished the library 5K. We can go on.
Okay, we're good?
Yep.
All right, I'm going to move on to public participation. If there is anybody in the public wishing to speak to us, this is the time. I know we have one attendee. Chris, if you would like to speak, just raise your hand and I will let you or James will let you in. I don't see anything. So we're going to move on to take action on prior meeting minutes. We have one. It is our last meeting for April 7th. I would entertain a motion to accept minutes as written.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion made by Carol and seconded by Michael. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Moving on.
Mr. Chairman, who are your four members that are present?
Oh, I'm sorry, James. It's Mike Camillo, Amy Parati, excuse me, Carol Dugan, and myself.
Okay, thank you.
So we have to take action on three invoices, I think we have, or two invoices?
Yeah, you have two invoices. There are two invoices that were provided for building committee action. One is from CSG for $30,460. The second is from Innovative Engineering Services for $789, and the two invoices total $31,249.
Thank you, Jeff. So a motion to approve those.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Michael. Second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to post? The motion passes unanimously. I see Danielle has signed on to the meeting, Jeff. I don't know if you saw her or not yet.
No, I did not.
Welcome, Danielle. Next item is update on the budget and the bid. Marty, are you still with us here? Let's see.
He's in the conference room.
Steve, it took me a minute to find you, bud.
Okay.
Here we are. We're all together. Um, there is no update on the budget. The budget has not been changed since it was presented as part of the CD estimate. As you know, we have received bids and we're have been busy with value engineering. However, until the committee takes action on the value engineering, I did not want to have the budget reflect any cost savings that we've been working on. So once the committee hears about the value engineering tonight and makes some decision, I'll be able to update the budget and to reflect that. Additionally, Lou has been working with Craig Holland and the rest of us on the technology budget. And again, there's a, there's a bunch of options in play there to pull money out of that budget. We're looking at a couple of different scenarios to help offset the construction overrun. So really, it's fluid as of today. Once the committee makes some decisions on the VE as well as once we receive bids for the packages that are going out for rebid and compile all that financial or numerical data, we'll do a budget update.
Okay, thank you, Marty. Now, I'm going to skip down then to the construction manager's update, so he can bring us up to the date where we are. Obviously, we're over budget. We knew that. That's why we didn't have the last meeting. They'd been meeting with the the apparent low bidders and working through some value engineering and some value management to get us back on track. I think they've done a pretty good job and we're headed definitely in a right direction. And with that time, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, you want me to put the the log up there? Can you allow me to share this screen?
Sure.
We should be good, Tom.
Okay. All right, what are you? Are you seeing the log?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. So as Steve mentioned, you know, the bids came in over the budget. We, we spent the last few weeks extensively reviewing those bids and asking the contractors for cost-saving pricing and asking the Board of Ed if they could save anything on the soft cost side. And everyone's been very cooperative. So we came up with this document we call a value management log, and we're identifying well over $4 million that could be cut from the project. Now, in the process of the review, we decided that five of the current bid packages need to be rebid. And KBA is currently adjusting the documents with some of these cost-saving measures. And those will be rebid starting next week. We anticipate taking the bids in, I think, on May 18th. So at that point, when we have those numbers, we'll be able to make final decisions on these value management ideas. So there's a lot of items on here. If you look at the top, this summary, this $243,000, that's $243,000 right now under budget, assuming that all these things come to fruition and that this, you know, 4.7 million or so is accepted. There's a lot of ideas here. We've been over it extensively with the design team, with the district. So rather than, you know, take over an hour to go through these. So if you have any questions on any specific items, I can, I can address them. But these, this is like Marty said, this is a fluid document. We're still getting pricing in from trades. We're coming up with other ideas. And of course, we have the rebids, which will change some of these values.
Does anybody have any questions? I know I sent that out as soon as Tom sent it to me and everybody. I know it's a lot, excuse me, to absorb. But if you have any questions, this is the time.
It would appear that the, the pending amount does not add up to the total that's in the, it's on the last page. I've got 100 and $100,129 credit. And but only $52,000, $413 of credits.
Oh, yeah, there must be some hidden lines in there. Yeah, so you only have these two line items for for numbers. Yeah, this is not the Excel document, so there's got to be some hidden lines in there, but they're pending, so. I think the more important ones are the ones that are, that are proposed to be accepted.
And the pending numbers are not part of the, the grand total, correct?
Correct.
That it, Jeff?
That's it. Thank you.
Keith?
Yes, thank you, Steve. Is this time where, where I can speak or is it solely just?
No, go ahead, Keith.
Okay.
The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I want to first compliment the committee for the work they've done on trying to resolve the overbroad overages on the budget that was anticipated. But it does raise all kinds of questions for me. You know, I, as the town manager, will be the one responsible for signing off for the final documents. And the council will be presented this at some point for their approval and so forth acceptance. But I guess what, what raises my eyebrows quite a bit is the the types of materials that are being adjusted here and how they ever got into the program in the first place. You know, this, the, I mean, just looking at, I'll go to the soft cost. $437,000 for furniture. That's half of the furniture that's, that's desired. And now we're saying that half of that furniture can be reused? Why was it in the budget in the first place? Why was it in the package? And then I, there's no need to answer at this point because they're all the same question. You know, the technology for what? The 325,000 playground equipment, 193. The contingency, $887,000 is being suggested be removed. You know, I go through the list here, and I just can't fathom why if we can make these types of savings, what else is there in the $39 million plan that can be eliminated or reduced or corrected in some way? I just, you know, we got, we have granite rather than concrete or ballards. We have the top of the floor line or top of the line for the flooring. Why would we do that in a school where kids are running all over it all the time? I just, I'm reading through this and, you know, I purposely, as the town manager, have tried to stay away from this project because I was not really encouraged to be part of it. And I, I know the committee has worked very hard on it, and I don't fault the committee for anything. I'm looking at more I'm asking the architect and the owner's rep, why are we able to cut $4 million out of this plan? And why are we cutting what we are cutting? It just baffles me. And, and like I said, the, the question is, what else is in this plan that should be eliminated? We're not, we're not building a Taj Mahal here. We're building a school for kids to learn in. I mean, I look at the, the playground where there's $70,000 for playground markings, no color or acrylic and no paw prints, $70,000? I need some explanation. I mean, I've got to go before the council at some point and make my recommendation. And I'll tell you, folks, if you can find $4 million with what you've done already, boy, it was probably another $4 million you could easily find that is not necessary or, you know, don't need to be at the highest level of quality that I mean, what is it with this? I think it's $40,000 for something, some, some millwork and, you know, I, I don't have it. I don't see it on this sheet. I mean, I just need answers because at this stage of the game, I, I'm really concerned that this, this school is being turned into a, you know, the cat's meow or something. It's, it's just ridiculous based upon what has already been reduced by the committee. Here's one for $45,000 for the main lobby for removal of Newton Schoolhouses. What the hell is that about? $45,000? I mean, jeez. This town is not capable of sustaining that type of, of cost. And then you have these windows that were going to be open, and now they're all closed. Why was it ever proposed to be open if, if it wasn't necessary to be opened up? So I'll stop here because I think you get the gist of my concern that, I mean, based upon what I'm seeing here, there's got to be a lot more investigation done as to what is contained within the remaining $35 million and how much of that should be removed for being unnecessary or, you know, specking out, you know, granite over concrete. I just, it's just unbelievable. So I'll stop talking at this point, and I'd like to, you know, have the, the architect explain what the heck we're doing here and the, our owner's rep, why is this happening?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Keith. Marty or Jennifer, I don't know which one wants to go first, or I can actually go first. I got to address some of it, but I can't address obviously all of it. You know, let me, let me take a stab at it first is one, the courtyard. I think the courtyard kind of for me, Keith was a placeholder. I had hoped that we could do some of the things in the, in the courtyard. And then obviously, I think while we hit the street with our bids at a great time, typically late March, early April is the best time to hit a street with a package like this. You get the biggest savings. Contractors are looking for work to fill out their schedules. I could, nobody predicted the war and now we're in what the highest inflation we've had in 40 years. So I think that's reflecting a lot of it. I think some of the prices are inflated because of where we are. I don't think anybody foresaw that. As far as use of materials, and I think and I, I don't want to speak for them, but I'm speaking for myself right now that it was trying to get something in there that would last as long as possible. And I think that's probably why they chose some of the materials they did. And again, prior to it, the bids coming in, we thought that we were good. And I had questioned whether we would even move forward with the courtyard, but wanted to see where that number would come in. That was, and I knew it was going to be substantial, and it is. I'd range here, it's 850 or $830,000, I believe, is the savings. But I know one of the site contractors actually pegged it at a million six. So I, I'll stop there and is it either Marty, Jim, or Jennifer?
Sure, Steve. You know, I think in terms of accoutrements that enhance the building, really, this, other than the courtyard, which, you know, we kind of knew was going to, you know, be on the chopping block, should we be over budget. I don't see this project as, you know, as enhanced or elaborate as some may think. I mean, the, the decisions that we made were difficult decisions. You know, typically, you know, I know you, you mentioned Mr. Chapman about owners contingency, you know, normally on a project, you'd like to see it a little bit higher than that. That's not a fluff factor. That's for unforeseen conditions. You know, and, and the materials, a lot of the materials, and I don't mean to speak for the architect, but the types of materials that they use, I'm just going to reiterate what Steve mentioned is, you know, you're looking for materials that are durable and that are going to last. Therefore, it hopefully reduces your maintenance costs over time. If by any means, from what I've seen and what I see in other projects, currently, we're managing seven other school projects. This, you know, really was a good, you know, I don't want to say bare bones, but it was a standard design without much for you know, enhancements that one could see in, in other projects. I think we are in a, in a time that is kind of unprecedented. You know, projects are, and prices are just going through the roof. We had two estimators estimate this project before we went out to bid, two independent estimators who agreed on the pricing. So, you know, we are again in, in a, in a time of really unprecedented material escalation. I think we are all kind of caught off guard on this. You know, and again, I, I, you know, I wouldn't say that this project is, is outlaidish by, by any means.
May I comment, Steve?
Yes, yeah, Keith.
Yeah, okay. I'm not, I, I'm not talking about the money. I'm talking about what it is that's in this project that doesn't make any sense. You know, this is not a project where we're shooting to hit the 3.35 million, 500,000 right on the nose. This is a project that should have been seeking to reduce from 35.5 down as low as you could go. But I see the stuff on this list, and why would we have granite rather than concrete? Why would we have windows that open if they're not necessary? Those are the types of things I'm questioning. I mean, if, if this list was not developed and sent out to me, I appreciate Steve's providing through me, I certainly wouldn't know about it. I assumed as the town manager that the owner's rep on this, on this job would be seeking to save every dollar it could while still meeting the needs of the school and the codes. I don't see that at all here. I don't, I mean, realistically, as I, as I go through this list, it just doesn't make any sense. I mean, give me, give me the reasons why we're we're cutting $70 million out of the painting of the, or markings on the playground. $70,000 if, why is it even in there? This was not something that you shoot for 35 million, 500,000. This is something you shoot for less than 3,500, 500,000. But this is, I mean, can somebody explain to me what $70,000 is for? For the, for the playground, you know, painting? And paw prints? What the heck is $70,000?
I can speak to that if that's okay. Paul from Calcalboos, architect. So as Jim mentioned, and Steve, a lot of the decisions that went into this is based on durability and longevity of all, all the materials. But to your point with the playground markings, that's what we designed schools, K-12 schools, and we've done that before in other projects for, you know, for its age-appropriate play. And we, we recognize now that in this environment, it's just not, not an option to have for you, unfortunately. So, you know, a lot of decisions have gone into this project. Your point about the operable windows, that was requested by the district. So there's been a lot of decisions going into the design piece of this. And we recognize now, in this environment, there's, there's some things that we normally do, we just can't afford it. And we're working very hard with CSG and Newfield to make good decisions, working with the district to get you in line with, with where you need to be. So, I mean, I know it's a partial explanation, but that's been our thought process.
It sounds to me that you guys were looking to spend $35 million, 500,000, and you, you I just, it, it baffles me. Is this the way that we are running this town where we're purchasing items that are not necessary in the first place and then having to cut them to meet the $35 million mark? I mean, what are the windows? Why are they, why were they designed to be open?
Keith, I can answer that one. I think that's purely driven by COVID. I think if COVID didn't happen, they, we probably would not have had all operable windows. It would have been a mixture of the two, which is what it is right now. There was a lot of discussion. Remember, this was designed through the heat of COVID and fresh air because this school did not have the ability to have that at the time.
Without the windows being opened?
Pardon me?
Will it have fresh air capabilities without these windows being opened?
Yes, it will have some. Now, what's going to happen is there's still the ability to have some fresh air. I mean, I don't want to speak for the rest of the committee, but I think some of the things you're seeing, I think they're 25, 30, maybe as much as 40 or 50% over what the market was just a year ago. I don't think anybody anticipated this, Keith. I really don't.
Steve, I, I don't disagree with that. What I'm, what my problem is, is I, I, I mean, yes, I, I recognize the inflation factor. I recognize we're at war now. I recognize materials are difficult. It's not a question of what it is that we have dollar figures for. The question is, why are they even included without all of those issues being presented to us? Why were they ever put into this project when I believe the town council at least believed that we were going to address the needs of the students not to build a Taj Mahal? And that's what I see happening here. Why would we have granite balliards instead of concrete? I mean, why? What's the logic behind that? You know, this is taxpayers' money we're talking about here. It's, it's borrowing money that we're going to pay interest on. It just seems to me that there was no real effort by the architect or our own owner's reps to hold the line on spending. It just got out of control, and now we're trying to reel it back in, and we're blaming it on the economy and everything else. But these things should have never been in the project in the first place. In my, if they're needed, they're needed. If they're not, then why the hell did we put them in here in the first place?
All right.
And that's all I'm going to say.
Okay. Point taken, Keith. I, I hear you loud and clear. Jennifer?
Um, there were just a couple of, of things to touch on. I know the windows have come up a lot. There are a lot of existing. The window system now has all these operable windows. We weren't really taking that away in the design. But now, because of the cost, and we think in many cases escalation, we're revisiting that now to limit the number of operable windows. But if we were to look at the existing building, it's, it's loaded in the classrooms with operable windows. So this isn't something that you, that we're adding to this project because we're trying to spend 35 and a half million dollars. And, you know, I, I do want to, I guess, mention again, as far as dur- Um, and, you know, I, I do want to, I guess, mention again, as far as durability of some materials and how they hold up to maintenance and how they even cut maintenance costs typically. The flooring that we were proposing in the classrooms, for instance, requires less maintenance, less time for custodial staff and things and has some good durability. Um, but the project can't afford it, so we're revisiting that. Um, but it's certainly not a, an ex- a very high-end product. It's appropriate for schools and often done. In fact, what we are now going to recommend is that in this value, value management, going to VCT floor. Um, I've, I've had people ask me, really, like, um, whenever I bring up VCT for a school, they're like, really? You're still going to use VCT? It's it's just, it's like the, the base, uh, you know, the base lowest, you know, thing that you can go with and, and that's where we're, that's where we're at. That's not what we would have liked to do for you for a design, but we, we weren't going top of the line either. Um, we just wanted some good products that, that would hold up and, um, and not be maintenance issues for you. Whether it was time or having to replace them over, whether it was time spent on maintenance or having to replace them over time. Um, there are things that we thought would be good improvements to your, um, to your school, such as the school doesn't have a main entrance, um, canopy. So when, when people come in in the morning and protecting them from weather, uh, you know, that is something that we, um, that we were, that we included in the design that isn't there currently in the school. Um, but we thought that would be worth it and we're sad to see it go. At this point, um, I, I know you're saying, you know, how do we cut four million dollars out? There must be four million dollars more. There's nothing, you know, there's nothing left. It's, uh, all the design features, it seems, anything that was put into the lobby to make this a, a nice welcoming space for taxpayers to walk in and say, oh, you know, you've, you've freshened this place up. Um, I see you've done a renovation. You know, there's, there's very little left, um, now that is really um, showing much, much new design and, and, and life into it. It's pretty, it's pretty basic. So there, there's not going to be four million dollars more to find in the project. Um, it just isn't there. Um, there may have been, I was writing down notes as you were talking, but I'm not sure. Oh, the pavement markings, um, one thing about that, I believe some of that money was actually to re- redo markings because we need to do some repaving in some areas and there are currently pavement, pavement markings, um, at the school. Whether it's four square and, you know, other things for, uh, asphalt play area where the kids go out and, and run around um, on the blacktop during recess. So some of that money, um, I believe is, is generally putting back what you have. Um, not all of it, but, but some of it is. So, um, I, I just think we're faced with, um, a lot of escalation now, now too. Anyway, just want to mention those few things.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody from the committee want to comment?
Camillo has his hand raised.
Go ahead, Mike. I'm sorry. Looking, I saw that there's a hand up, but I can't see who it is. Go ahead, Mike.
How's everybody today? Um, before we went to bid, we had to do some cuts just to get it within line to go to bid. And now we've got another four point seven million we've got to cut. And just like Jennifer said, there isn't anything left. But with inflation and we're not even, we probably don't have the materials bought yet. And they're going to continue to go up. So what are we going to have to cut as we're going? And what is there able to cut without going back and saying this isn't a renovation anymore, it's a repair? What are we going to do then? Cause we are right there, bottom line, there isn't anything else to cut. And as things increase in cost, and they will over the next two years, what are we going to do? Cause we can't go over the fif- thirty-five point three million. Anybody have an answer to that? Or should we just cut our losses now and come back to this another time?
I have an answer actually, Michael. Thank you. That's a good point.
Thanks, Marty.
Yeah, the good news is that the, the pricing that the contractors have given you has to remain, uh, has to remain at that, at that price throughout the entire project. So, um, even if prices go up in another year and we're, you know, still, still working on the project, um, they would have to absorb any additional cost increases. So, you know, that actually may be driving some of the pricing because these contractors have to, you know, make a projection. Um, you know, twenty-seven months out, which is our construction schedule, they are obligated by the terms of the contracts, and this is unusual for any of these projects. They have to hold their bid price for the entire project. So, um, what you see, what you see now is what it will be.
Right, you, you've cut some things. A big part of the the four point seven mil was two million in soft costs. So the sewer pipes are staying. Um, we went from cast iron to PVC. And you were talking about maintenance and something that's going to withstand time. Why would we cut cast iron pipes? And go to PVC?
Yeah, Mike, I'm just, I'm just waiting because I'm not familiar with the location of where we cut uh, the cast iron versus the, the PVC. So I'll let, I'll let Jennifer respond to that one in particular. Um,
But, uh, I mean, right now, when it went to referendum for the thirty-five million, what did we cut just to get it to go to bid that was in the original referendum? When you guys came up with your figures with Colliers?
Um, very little, Mike. We added a few add alternates, the courtyard being one of them. Cause we knew that was an outlier. Uh, we believe the canopy was on as a add alternate. Um, because we knew we were adding that to the school. We wanted it. Um, and trying to think what else there was. There's, there was one or two small other things, um, but nothing large money. The large money really was the courtyard. That was where we thought, uh, we would get the biggest bang for our dollar. So, we have not, you know, the dimensions of this building have not changed. Integrity of the renovate is new, has not changed. We're still meeting, um, any of the requirements the state would put on us to make sure that we get our reimbursement. Um, the pipes, uh, I, again, I thought all along that we weren't going to replace the pipes. We went through the expense of getting them scoped, if you remember several months ago.
Right.
Um, and they worked out one, fine. There is two wings that we didn't scope only because we couldn't find the cleanouts. We have money in the budget. So once the demo starts and the cleanouts then become uncovered, we expect, um, to be able to get into them and scope them. And again, there is some risk on our end there that we expect them to be the same as the ones we just did scope, that they will not need to be replaced.
What, on a soft cost BM dash G five, it's almost nine hundred thousand dollars. What is that? It says contingency. Oh.
Mike, I can, I can speak to the soft cost. So, um, the soft costs you see the cuts for furniture and technology and the playground and the owner's contingency. Um, just to kind of bring you back to the budget, uh, that I, I present, if you recall, there's, there's column number one of the budget and all of those numbers were taken from uh, the grand estimate breakdown that, um, Colliers and J C J did for the town. So, um, the amount of money that was set aside for furniture, the amount of money that was set aside for playground, the amount of money that was set aside for the owner's contingency, we worked from those numbers. Um, we really didn't know what was in their heads as far as what the scope was that they were thinking for furniture and, and technology. So we took, we took the numbers that they had established and, and then, and then scoped them out and then, you know, sat down with, with, um, the school about their furniture needs and sat down with Craig Holland, with I T and Lou and and worked through what their technology needs were. And once that, those scopes were defined, we could say, hey, you know, there really is too much money um, in, in these budgets. We don't need all the money that was originally allocated. So that's what these are. These aren't, uh, cuts, um, per se from a, a package that, that was established that we're taking things away that are needed.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars owner's contingency. You're taking that out?
It's being reduced.
So what, what we're doing is we're reducing the owner's contingency to help offset the construction overrun. So, um, the last, the, let me say, the maximum contingency that the state will allow uh, is five percent. And at time of CD estimate, uh, budget, we were, we were somewhere in the four percent range. So in order to offset the construction overruns, we're, we're proposing, proposing to reduce that owner's contingency even further. Um, does that make any of us happy? Absolutely not. You know, you want to have as much in orders contingency as you possibly can um, before you start the project. But i- it is, it is a suggestion as a, as a path forward.
And what happens if we need to use that up? You know, if you're going to take nine hundred thousand and you're at one point seven when you started, where's the money going to come from if you can't go over the thirty-five point three million?
That's just it. We can't, Mike. If, if something came up, we would have to find another solution.
Right, and maybe we should leave that alone and go somewhere else just in case. Find something else that doesn't need to, you know, you don't really need at this time. And if it's, everything works out towards the end of the project, use your contingency to fini- fill in the blanks.
Yeah, so like they're
Yeah, that's absolutely worth discussion and that's why we're all here.
Mike, remember though, this, this document is fluid. And right now, uh, as we looked at it and started off, remember the figure that they gave us was three, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, approximately two forty, I believe it is, if you go to the doc, was the document. Uh, we're two forty-three, two oh three under budget. So that owner's contingency that was cut by eight hundred and sixty thousand would go up by two hundred and forty-three. So it would make the cut down to six hundred and twenty, six hundred and thirty thousand for that particular. And any additional funds that were gained through prices coming in better or any further value management, um, that the team finds, it would all go back to that, uh, to our, uh, owner's contingency.
Right. Did we already cut that to begin with to get it to go to bid?
We did not. Well, we, we, we cut it. It was initially at five. I believe we cut it down to four or four and a half. We cut it to four and I think it went back up to four and a half.
So, when do you think you'll have the figures at our next meeting in another week or so or?
Well, the bids come in, the bids come in on the eighteenth. So until we get those bids, um, you know, we won't have, we won't have more definite numbers.
We, we won't have time to get this to the council then at the end of the month.
Well, actually, is it okay, Steve, if I segue into the schedule then?
Yep, our, our goal is, is to try to meet that, uh, Mike, to get it.
Yeah. This is, this is the revised pre-construction schedule. I started with the day we received the bids, which was April seventh. And here's where we're at now. We're at, um, document revisions for rebidding. That's ongoing right now. Uh, we're going out to bid on, technically on Monday. I'll issue the bulletin tomorrow. Um, and then we have this whole scenario laid out with, you know, we're going to take two days to evaluate the rebids and make the final decisions on Friday, the twentieth. Um, we need to run the, uh, pro- proposed awards by the town manager. That's this activity. Finalize the GMP on Monday. Hold a special building committee meeting on, on Monday evening, the twenty-third. And then hopefully we can get this to the town council on the twenty-fourth, which is, uh, their next regular meeting.
Uh, James, will they have time to get that in for that?
If, uh, leadership's in, in agreement with it, we can always add it as an additional agenda item that night as long as it's prepared and ready to go.
Yeah, we'll not be here on the week of the, uh, the twenty-third.
Yeah, the, what I have planned is I was going to submit the, the actual GMP document without, without the values so that the, whatever, the town attorney and town manager have a chance to look at it. So they're not looking at it the day before. You know, we, we ask you to approve it.
Okay.
So the goal here, Mike, obviously is to not lose this summer's construction, right? If, if we, if the numbers come in where we want them to be, we are back on track, we are on budget. But we don't want to be able to lose, you know, two, three, four weeks, um, of summer construction.
Yeah, the issue is too, the, the next regular council meeting is, I think, June uh, fourteenth, maybe?
Yeah, it's a three-week one.
So it's one of those where you have three weeks in between. So that would be just three weeks lost.
Right. Okay, um, it seems like we're out of the loop a little bit as a committee. We're not getting the information early enough so we can go through it. I mean, this was really good what you sent us, Steve.
Hey, Mike, I sent it to you, I think, in a, less than an hour after I got it, if it was.
Understanding is pretty, it's pretty plain and simple here. Um, but okay. Fingers crossed, guys. Let's see what happens.
Who else has their hand up? Anybody? Yes.
Mayor. Steve, is it okay if I just ask a quick question? Thank you.
As Ms. Mayor, you have the ability to speak at any meeting. You know that.
Well, I appreciate it.
While you don't have a vote, you carry a very lot of weight. So, yes, we're, we're, I'm glad that you were in attendance and I wish we had, you know, obviously better news. Um, but I guess the good news out of the bad news is that it's, we're back on track.
Yeah, and I, Steve, first of all, I want to say thank you to the committee. It looks like there's been a ton of work done here and I know this is not easy to, uh, to decide on what is appropriate to keep and what's appropriate to cut. Um, I know, speaking from experience with the town hall renovation project, um, we were in a similar spot where we had to make these kinds of decisions to get it within budget and based on that experience, I'm, I guess I would just share my concerns with the committee is that, um, we are now, um, we've got a project that's finished, but we're still kind of catching up and making adjustments to things that were cut along in the process. Um, so it makes me nervous when I see some of these cuts and, and I worry about what that's going to mean for the future after the project is completed. Um, how much will we have to then adjust or pay after the fact in order to fix or change or add things that were taken out? So I would just mention that as a caution. I know we're dealing with, um, even some basic HVAC issues that could have been handled during the project and we're not able to because of budgetary restrictions. So, um, so I'm concerned to see some the amount of cuts and value engineering that's necessary to get this within, uh, within budget. Um, and then Steve, I heard you saying that it'll be coming to the council on the twenty-fourth, but are you going to be looking for a waiver from us to take action that evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, because of that long stretch in between. Uh, so we're going to try to get you as much information prior to the twenty-fourth. So, you know, we, you'll have everything. Um, but, but obviously the last five bids to come in, you won't have that, that missing piece, but all the other bids that came in, you'll have all that information that will be locked in and cemented at that time. That won't change moving forward. Um, but the five bids that gets, that, that will come to you at the last bit. And I'll be honest with you. It, it, it could make or break it, right? If it comes in over, then the whole thing just falls apart and we don't come to you on the twenty-fourth because we can't move forward because we're over the budget. If it comes in under, we're going to be looking for you to, to do that.
Okay.
And I don't like that. I don't, and I know you, 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 you'd also don't like to take those, those sort of actions. And, you know, Beth, I, I've been doing this a long time as well as you have and you, you plan and you plan and you plan and then I don't know what happens, but it seems like always something falls apart and it's last minute and we're asking you to do something that you don't normally do. And you know, And you know, and I I would be the first one to admit, if you get the public to come out and there's. Questions and and you can't answer them, and we can't answer them for you, then yes, but if, you know, if there isn't. You, the council is satisfied, and the public either hasn't participated or is satisfied. Then, you know, I would ask you to move it forward, but if that, again, is your choice, um.
Well, and I I will tell you that I understand the necessity to fast-track it in terms of the construction schedule. If the council doesn't feel like they've had enough time to review things, we can also call a special meeting just a couple days later instead of three weeks later, so. Um, I always follow uh, my gut and the the wish of the council, so. It's just difficult to digest this amount of information in a very short time span, so.
Yeah, I get it.
I am committed to working this process quickly, I just, I'm cautioning you, if it doesn't happen that night, we'll, we'll do a special meeting. Very quickly to get it done, because I know that's time is of the essence. I guess that's it for now, but um, just. Be cautious on the, the, the value engineering scares the bejesus out of me. Based on our experience with town hall and the things that we're still fixing and and figuring out, so I'd rather see, you know, either. A consideration for um, whether we need to look at the whole project in a different way or referendum to get approval for more or whatever. I don't know the right answer, um, but I don't wanna see us over value engineer and then regret it in the end is my biggest concern, so. Just sharing my thoughts, thank you.
Again, point, point taken, and we hear you. Um, anybody else?
I got one more thing.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, covering the duck work, instead of cleaning it. Says covered duck work, duck work opening in lieu of duck work cleaning, in lieu of cleaning of all new duck duck work. I thought we were having individual um zones in each classroom. Or did that change?
Now, Tom, do you wanna address that?
Yeah, there is, there is individual, but there's still duck work.
Okay, is that gonna be in the hallways?
There is duck work in the hallways as well.
Okay.
Um, so what this item is, is, it de- it depends on how, really, how much we have to use the permanent system. During the late stages of construction, and the reason why it's on there is because, you know, we worked it out with the. Low bidder on mechanical and and they've agreed to leave the temporary heating system in place for as long as absolutely possible. We still have a small allowance in there to clean duck work if we need to.
Okay.
It's just not as big as it was, and it doesn't require that mechanical contractor to cover every. No, he key covers every duck, it doesn't require him to clean them at the end of the project, if they don't need to be cleaned. And that's where the savings comes in.
Also, Keith had a question about the windows being open or closed, since. We are using those units in each classroom, that will bring in fresh air from outside.
Yeah, but that's not, the system is designed to bring in its own fresh air, so this would be supplemental, there's still eighty-one windows in the project. Which is basically two windows in every classroom, and then the small rooms, it's one operable window.
Okay.
Two, two operable windows in each classroom.
So they would be for egress?
No.
They're not. I'm sorry, no, that's all right, I'm sorry to interrupt, um, this building, because it's fully sprinkler, does not have the requirement to have egress windows. Um, that's something that that comes into play if you're not a fully sprinkler building, because the code recognizes. Um, how well sprinklers work um in those situations, so um, they're not for egress. Um, oftentimes operable windows are used because of individual comfort and. Teachers tend to like to, we, we run into this all the time, districts often provide operable windows because teachers want the ability. To open a window and get that immediate fresh air, telling them it's coming from another unit. Um, I don't know, maybe it's like a, you know, a mental thing, and it's just this comfort level. But like I said, the the classrooms right now have full operable windows existing in the building. Um, we were trying to do the same kind of thing and give that back to them, even though. We're not relying on it for mechanical ventilation, the units in the room have their own, it's bringing in fresh air and. Um, the code required ventilation is happening through the individual units in most of the classrooms. It happens through um, a ducted system in some other areas, um, but most of it is that individual, that individual unit. So uh, that value management item is just reducing the number of operable windows, but still allowing the occupants to have that choice.
One more question. Says revived, revised conduit size drops from one and a quarter to one inch. Wouldn't you wanna have something bigger with room, just in case you have to run something later? Instead of opening walls up or ceilings up, you could just run another. Or you're gonna have the runs already done, when you close everything up?
I guess I could comment on this one, even though um, I I wasn't the one to make the decision, but. So this was run by the engineer as well as Craig Holland, you know, the thought process was is that, you know, more things are becoming wireless, so. Inch and a quarter, you can get a lot of those little wires in there, so I think he felt that one inch was more than adequate.
Okay, and are there going to be chase ways, or are there gonna be bigger conduits going down the hallways? So are everything gonna be wireless with routers all over the building?
There'll still be um, significant conduit running through the building, we certainly don't have all wireless, some of the wireless is um, within the classroom. Um, but it, I, you know, it's not like it's a wireless building.
Okay, so it won't be a smart building yet?
It's, I mean, there's so many systems in the building, um, it's, uh, there's some classroom. Audio amplification that that's, that's going on, um. There's the inner, there's, there's boards in front of the classroom for teaching and some of the, the board, um, some of that technology is wireless. Um, but there's a, there's a variety of of wired and wireless, I'd still say a lot is wired these days.
Thank you.
Keith?
Yeah, just a question on the windows again, in the classroom. You're saying that some of the windows will be able to be open, correct?
There'd be two, yeah, two windows in each classroom, Keith, I believe.
And are, and you're saying they're not for egress, correct?
Correct.
So how do the kids get out of the classroom if there's a need to exit the classroom other than their door?
Sure, the door is the primary means of of egress, and that meets building code and fire codes um, today. Um, those codes designate how many doors are required out of a classroom space, it speaks specifically to schools. Um, so typically, it's one door out of a classroom is sufficient in a fully sprinkled building. Um, when it's a larger space, then um, and there's, there's calculations that we need to do. Um, when there's a larger space, uh, it it often would require two ways to leave, and they need to be in separate directions. But there's all sorts of rules um, that we need to make sure we're, we're meeting, there's all sorts of code regu- regulations. Fire code and building code to ensure occupant safety, how far somebody can travel out of that classroom. They can't travel forever until they get to an exterior door, so we have to check what the distance is and make sure that we're in the, within the limits. And the distances differ for schools versus other types of buildings like businesses and things like that, so we still do meet code. Um, and the code says that we don't need egress windows in a school when it's fully sprinkled.
Okay, so if there is a shooter in the school. And it's, and that shooter is in the hallway where there's a series of classrooms. How do we get the kids out of the classroom?
Well, in this particular case with this school and what we've put on the table for value management. Um. I'd have to check to see if those windows would be large enough to permit. Somebody to go through them, there are screens and and, you know, you block, you knock out the screen, um, but. We do other things to to help to try to limit, let's say there's an active shooter, there's other things that we do to try to limit. Exposure of students to that, um, there's doors that I don't wanna speak in too much detail, we try not to publicly. You know, do all the secrets of security, um, but there are at ends of corridors. Uh, doorways, we call them like these cross corridor doorways, that will automatically. In the event of an, of that kind of situation, that kind of emergency, um. We can have those doors be activated to automatically close and lock, so a person, they're only locked in one direction. Free egress the other way, the kids could be in one wing of the building and. Theoretically, if a shooter's in the other wing of the building, they won't be able to get into. They, they won't be able to get around the building, they won't have a free-for-all to make the loop that Anna Reynolds is, they would be locked out, they'd be, that that active shooter would be in. One wing of the building and just couldn't go anywhere else, um, except for out of the building or just within one wing. So we try to do that to like, to minimize how far someone can go, to, you know, how much exposure they can get. Um, and that will, that would allow too, in a wing of a building. That the students in a wing, if the shooter's in another wing, the students in a wing can go out a different direction. And exit without, i- i- this, uh, Anna Reynolds is a, is a big loop, so. The, the kids could go out one direction while the shooters shooters in another direction, provided there's communication going on, um. This is all very standard.
Okay.
School of security stuff these days, and and we do follow, um. We do look to the, the state asks us to review the school safety infrastructure council standards, um, and to. To provide designs that that meet certain requirements in there, so that's something that we, that we look to, we do have a security consultant. There's, there is a lot of of stuff that goes into that, but the code is, is the biggest thing, it it is okay for us to. To eliminate some of these operable windows, or all of them, we could eliminate all of them, but it's, it's still, teachers do like to have that. Capability of opening a window here and there.
Keith, anything else? No, okay, um, Mary and Mike, I don't know, I'll tie your hands up, so we're, go ahead, Mike.
Um, you also took the school guard blazing out, just went with lemonade glass. Um, what I've seen on other schools, the two egress windows are the windows that operated. It's like classroom five, window one, window two, so it's like five, one, five, two, are you going to mo- label those windows so they can be seen from the outside? From each classroom? And why wouldn't you stay with the school guard blazing for seventeen thousand dollars in savings, why not just leave it?
Um, school guard glazing wasn't throughout, I don't know, uh, please caution me, school district or others, if you don't want me talking about.
Rejected, um, Tom, Lou, somebody help me with that, I thought the, and it was only going in the main entry, and I thought that was gonna stay.
It's pending based on uh, your security consultant's review, and I think Jennifer is working through that with, with him right now.
The windows did not have. School guard glazing throughout the building, it wasn't all the windows, it was actually um, entrance locations, all the doors, egress doors and. Those are typically, you know, they're the entrance and egress points, so it was limited to doors in the design, which also is very common. Um, uh, rather than every. Every window in a school, um. So that savings isn't removing them from all the windows in the school, all the windows in the school didn't have it.
Uh, will the windows that do operate be marked, which one?
So the windows are not going to be marked egress window at this point, um, because they weren't. Um, required to be used for egress windows, we could evaluate doing that, windows are marked. Um, classrooms are marked at the windows, I guess, so that first responders can have better communication with the occupants in the building. So you could say, you know, yes, I have a situation in classroom fifteen, and from the exterior, a first responder or anybody would be able to. Um, see, the first window and last window in that room marked is fifteen. And they would know that, and and the letters have to be a certain size and and that whole thing, so windows are labeled. And um, doors are also marked and numbered, um, it it goes, uh. Around, in in Anna Reynolds' case, um, it would go um, around the school, I can't recall if it's clockwise or counterclockwise, but um. But they would all be designated and marked for that better communication, but it wasn't about egress. It was about identification of what's, what's behind that window. Who's got a problem and how can we find them?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Mayor, I know your hand was up, but was it just you didn't take it down, or?
I, well, I was gonna tag in on the egress question, a- as an educator, I was just thinking, we've done Alice training, I don't know what Newington uses, but. Um, in the old days, it was that you lock down, stay in your room, don't move, don't, you know, turn, shut the lights off, hide. And now it's get out any way you can, so the egress, um, windows for egress does keep my interest and um, is an area that I would. I, I, I know we're trying to find valued ways to decrease the budget, but um. Possibility of egress for our teachers and students would be something I'd be interested in hearing more about, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Not, we'll go back. To our agenda, which I'm not so sure we need, we've kind of done it, but architect's update. Uh, Jennifer, I know that you're working on revised drawings, does anything else you wanna add?
Yes, I mean, that's pretty much it, our, our focus this week was um, revising anything that needed to be rebid, there's those certain packages that are being rebid. That's our focus, and then next week, we have to start focusing on the other value management items, um, so that, you know, we'll get to the point to. Uh, that contracts could be signed, um, and amounts agreed to.
Okay, any questions for Jennifer?
You know what, there's one thing I do wanna mention, I'm, I'm sorry, um, I do just want to say, the district has been very helpful in going through all this. The value management um, list, there's been a lot of work on their part, in particular, Lou. Um, has spent a lot of time with us, um, reviewing a variety of things and. Um, and just adding to the conversation of what, what they think might be negotiable versus not negotiable. Um, getting back to us with, with information when needed, so thank you.
Okay, um, we're welcome, yeah, any questions, yes, Lou, thank you. Or comments? Owners project manager update, uh, Marnie and Jim, and I know that you wanna introduce us. Um, to Eileen, so I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, thank you, Steve, uh, well, for uh, one thing that uh, we did receive the space waiver from the state, so um. We're uh, gonna be getting full reimbursement for the project. Um, another uh, item is that uh, Marnie uh, will be transitioning out. She'll be uh, moving to Florida, and we have Eileen Eagle here with us. Uh, who has been working with Marnie for uh, the past two weeks to transition into uh, into uh. Helping myself in, uh, you know, understand what's going on, what Marnie has uh, done. Um, she's been involved in uh, the value engineering uh, meetings, uh, as well as um, other meetings. Um, and is getting up to speed, and I believe Marnie's gonna be visiting the school with Eileen tomorrow. Uh, to show her around the uh, the school as well, so, um. We're sad to see Marnie go, uh, she still will be involved, uh, she won't be completely, uh. Uh, oh, you know, let her go yet, so, um, but uh, Eileen will be physically up here and in uh. Uh, doing the uh, uh, working with the school, uh, in moves and coordinating uh, those uh, aspects of the project.
Okay, um, thank you, and and Marnie, um, thank you for all of your work on the project and best of luck. To move to Florida, um, I don't know about this time of year, but I know for three or four months, it's a great place to live, but.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any questions or comments? Um, where I did the construction managers update, so any other business pertinent to the committee? Uh, Jim actually just brought it up, the, we, we, we did get the uh, um, the commitment letter that was sent to the Board of Education. For um, our waiver request, uh, which is a big deal, uh, because it would have thrown our budget off by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, so, um, by getting confirmation from. So by getting confirmation from the state, they will pick up another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the expense that would have fallen on the Newington taxpayers. So great work. And I know Lou and and Maureen worked really hard to make that happen. Thank you as well as the rest of the team. Jeff, do you have anything for us?
Oh, I don't. No, I have nothing. Next meeting is going to be on May nineteenth and then June second.
Okay. And what brings us to public part of? This is interesting. I've got a picture of Mike, Mike Camilla's hand raised, but a picture of Dana Havens.
It's not me.
We will move to public participation. And like once I go there. So.
I had a.
This is Dana Havens, AKA Michael Camillo. Want to see? Go ahead, Dana.
I couldn't. Thanks. I I couldn't find the link anywhere else, so Mike.
Give us just your name, Dana, and your address for the record, please.
Yep. Dana Havens, one thirteen Stoddard Avenue. All right, I was trying to take screenshots as the stuff was going by and I didn't get this one and it scared me when I saw it. Or not scared me, but I was confused maybe. And it began at M one and it was talking about the vents and Mike did seem to touch on it earlier. But the reason it's concerning me is air quality has been a huge issue forever. And to me, those lines read that the kids are going to be breathing in the air that's going through the same old mold coated vents. So it's kind of seems to be negating one of the main reasons why we're doing this. So if somebody could explain that further to me and put my mind at ease, that would help, especially since my kids were in Anna Reynolds when they got the white powder. So of course, I'm picturing that going into every classroom if some, you know, psycho decides to do it again. And then I saw Sonatrol was cut, which leaves me to be like, I thought security was a main reason also. So why are we cutting something like that? And I guess, yeah, the other stuff, superficial stuff, that's okay. Those are, I'll just stick with my main health issues.
Okay, so I'm going to, I can answer one, I believe, Sonatrol. I think what was happened originally, Sonatrol was specked out as an exclusive. There was, that was what the board wanted. And I believe the board is actually changing their direction on who their preferred vendor is. And they're opening it up and Lou or, excuse me, one minute. Dr. Brummett could speak more to that. I'll ask Tom to elaborate on the duck work, but I believe what is happening is that there is a new system being put in, which is a temporary system through the construction. The responsible party for that system is going to keep it up and running for as long as possible before it gets shut down. Now, there is a possibility that it could get shut down just prior to all the construction is done, but most of it should be completed. That's why we were able to eliminate the duck work cleaning because they're going to keep the temporary system up and running longer than they originally thought. Tom, if you want to add to that?
Yeah, Steve, that's a pretty good explanation. So the existing system, when we go into an area, will be immediately removed or within the first few weeks. And then we put a temporary heating system in. And that's the system that we're going to remain in uses for as long as possible so that we don't dirty up the new duck work. And if, you know, it's going to get inspected and if it needs to be cleaned, it will be cleaned. It's just that we don't, we, you know, we don't have the requirement of the of the contractor to do it in every phase if it doesn't need to get done. And that's where the savings comes in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dana. Anyone else? I don't see anybody. James, are you with us? I don't.
Yeah, we've got Chris on the attendee side.
Yep, go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate it. I just had a couple of comments after listening.
Give me, even though we know who you are.
Chris Minor, one nineteen Riviere Drive.
Thank you.
Just a few comments to the necessary value engineering decisions being made. I would only comment.
Seven out of the nine we need to get going.
There are several ones that I saw that I'm a little concerned with. And it's only from experience on going through with the town hall. First of which would be the consideration of poured concrete curbing versus precast concrete curbing. We went one step below precast concrete to by two minutes concrete. And we're already seeing the ill effects within two years of doing that. Longevity and I think the value of it being less than, you know, forty thousand dollars. To me, that's just a penny wise and pound foolish move because we're just going to have to pay for it down the road. The second consideration would be the flooring. VCT was changed out in lieu of higher grade flooring materials for the town hall. Already seen wear deterioration in some areas just in trying to keep up with them. With the volume of kids going through the classrooms. It's my understanding VCT is a rated material for about twenty years, where some of the other materials are rated closer to fifty years. And judging by the longevity of how long we want this building to last, I would hope we would at least consider pursuing that. That my last comment is there was a article published in the CT mayor within the last few days indicating that DES was reformulating the cost calculations of allowable school construction costs because they were having issues with projects underway not meeting those numbers. I'm hoping that we can at least explore if there are any repercussions that we can take care of at this point to try to help with that. But with this project being already underway, if we delay out any further or cut back any further, I would hate to see value engineering be a a negative and something that we waited so long to do. So thank you for everybody's efforts on this and look forward to seeing it. Keep going. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And nobody else. I see no other hands up. Excuse me, comments by members?
Lou just came up.
Oh, go ahead, Lou.
Hi, just wanted to jump in on Sonatrol for a minute for clarifications. You know, one of the major drivers of the reduction was with the courtyard being pulled out for renovations at this time. The Sonatrol components for also came out. And we had made several other adjustments to the overall scope to be able to just make it more affordable as well as at a minimum, maintain the standard to where we have everywhere else. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, everybody had a clear idea that we had some value management on it. And we had a little bit of scope reduction along with that to get to the number we're at.
Okay, thank you. Comments by or committee members? Anyone? I want to thank you all. I know this is not fun, but this is what they pay us the big bucks for. So thank you for your time and I will see you all on May nineteenth for our next meeting. Motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moves. All those in favor, signify by saying hi. Is there anyone opposed? Never is. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.